Coming up on UG TV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll, please.
A special session is being held on Thursday, December 12th, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Fifth floor Conference Room regarding the CMIP Major Capital Evaluation Criteria. Roll call. McKeonan?
Here.
McGee, Johnson, Kane, Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Burrows?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Alvey?
Here. All right. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding the Capital Maintenance and Improvement Project Major Capital Evaluation Criteria. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission. Last summer during our budget process, it was brought up to us that the commission recommended that we go through and develop, refine the criteria that we utilize, allow for different input areas for the commission as they go through this process as well, but to make it clear about how we are going through and evaluating our projects. A couple of times, we brought this, as we've been working through this, brought it to our Standing Committee in Public Works, got some feedback, additional feedback from that committee as we were working through it. We've also taken it to our Planning Commission to get input from them to lead us up to where we are tonight, to come forward with a recommendation to you to show you what we are doing as we work through this. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our Public Works Director and let him go into a little bit more about what we have in place. Jeff?
Thank you. Good evening. Just another example of proposing data-driven decision-making. Rob Anderson, our asset manager.
Can you press closer?
Okay, sorry. Robbie Anderson is our asset manager and is responsible for a lot of this work and working with others. He's been the lead throughout. Pretty impressive system, and so we'd like to propose this tonight. He'll outline that, and then, you know, each year after, we'll review how that, the outcome, and make sure that it's still appropriate and make adjustments along the way. It'll probably take us two, three years really to get this system working well. But I'll hand it over to Robbie and let him outline it.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and consideration on our recommended enhancements to the capital selection process. As elected officials, this is one of your greatest responsibilities to your community. The CMIP approved by this body each year has impacts on the future beyond our tenure as staff or elected officials and beyond our lifetimes. The CMIP produces long-term financial obligations that constrain our ability to adapt to the future of our infrastructure challenges. It is a document that will represent to future Wyandotte County residents an encapsulation of our ideals and priorities. The consequences to being poor stewards of our infrastructure needs and financial solvency are too great to not provide a systematic and transparent process for selecting projects. In order to serve our current population and those that will reside here in the future, we need to provide a deliberate, smart, and balanced approach to capital investment. I'm waiting for my advance here. Over the past few months, we have reached out to the Public Works Standing Committee and the Planning Commission in an effort to try to identify those criteria that are of most importance to them. So we produced a survey and asked for feedback from those governing bodies to prioritize the existing policy guidelines with some new ones that we've suggested. You can see here on the slide what that survey looked like, and it included an opportunity for those members to provide us with how they would weight those different criterion. We collected those surveys and we have produced some results here. So this is kind of a test here. Does this look right? It was interesting. I took this information and looked at standard deviations between the different studies or the different survey responses. So, for example, where Commerce, I gave it a seven so that the total would get to 100. The reason that got a seven was because, versus the other two that have the same score and average, is because their standard deviation was the smallest. So there was the most consensus around that score, and so I gave it an extra point. So what does this look like if we're going to put this into practice? Well, this isn't meant to be read, but there will be a quiz at the end. And I'll ask you what was on the seventh line of the second column. This is just to illustrate the problem we have. These are all projects that are over $200,000. How do we prioritize this list? That's why we needed the input. So I'm going to walk through the system that the Asset Management Group has come up with and Public Works staff and others have had input on as well. The first step, obviously, is to identify the needs. Projects are identified either by community requests, staff observations during inspections, or a history of work orders. Those projects are then put into a database and given to the Asset Management Division, and we map those, and so that we can both provide information to those that would score this, and in the future, if the project did become part of a real, of a CMIP, then that information is readily available to the public, and we just put the year that it's going to go in the CMIP, and it automatically shows up on our map. The cool part about this was analyzing the data, utilizing a combination of data sets that were put together by the Asset Management Team in concert with the Wyco Data Team and the data analysts in the Knowledge Department. In our amazing Vista program, we have been able to compute different statistics to measure and meet those different criterion. So ways to quantify the criterion that have been suggested. Just to stay on that slide for a second. So to point out here, for example, on one of those criteria, we have taken a project that was proposed and at different distances calculated the tax roll underneath it. So there's different buffers here. So at 250 feet, which is supposed to represent basically the block face that benefits from the direct investment, and then at 1,000 feet, just to capture the context, and 1,500 feet, just to add a little bit of variation to what we have. You'll be able to see that on your information sheet that's provided to you also, that we have metrics for population, metrics for the tax roll at different buffer distances to help illustrate both the return on investment piece and what level of population is served by a particular project. Here, we go to the next slide. So to be real nerdy, I'm not going to go over this, but we take all the information that we calculate in GIS and we give it a rank order score. So all projects are weighted against other projects across all the different data sets that we have access to. And then that rank score gets converted into a general score on a 1 to 5 scale that'll go into a product prioritization tool that interprets the weighted matrix that you've provided to us to calculate that weighted score, so that we can come up with a composite score for each individual project and rank order that queue of back projects. So if we have a list of identified project needs, that list of 50 that was on that other slide, and we put it into the system, we can have a prioritized queue to help us assemble the CMIP.
Possible to expand that table just briefly for us to?
It would be difficult at this time.
Can you zoom on that?
I would say that the projects highlighted in this are hypothetical on this particular one.
Okay, all right.
I didn't want to put the cart before the horse and provide you with the CMIP tonight because I don't want to step on my own toes in the future when I come back at you with my realist, right? So just for information's sake here. Sometimes data-driven decisions can make people uncomfortable, but we also need to have some sort of smell test even as purely data-driven approach to this. So our goal in adding this other layer to this process of having a select scoring committee, so an informed survey of select multi-departmental UG staff with specialization in one or more areas of the capital criteria identified, along with BPU staff with knowledge of planned maintenance and capital improvements for BPU Electric and Water Services, will be tasked with scoring all the projects. Each project will be scored, and the scores will be weighted based on the UG Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission's recommendations, and a composite score will be ranked and prioritized in that queue. So we're kind of have two parallel tracks here. We have a data-driven prioritization, and then we have the human input prioritization. I also, that list of committee members is select UG staff that have the specific knowledge This looks like one sheet of information, but there's a lot of information behind this. So I just want to take a minute to highlight kind of the origin story of how we're able to do this. The information behind this is in part homebrew, produced in-house, based on real data that is created in concert with Asset Management and the data analysts in the Knowledge Department. This stemmed in part from the Neighborhoods Up Initiative. So monthly meetings and questions that derive from that led to the creation of unique data sets that can help us answer these questions. So I'd also like to thank Geospatial Services for their access to the information that I needed to do this. Our enterprise agreement with Esri has offered us the opportunity to utilize Community Analyst, which is a unique product that gives us the ability to, alongside our homebrew data, put enriched Esri data layers that give us access to things like daytime population within the distance of particular projects.
Commissioner?
I was just curious. This looks really cool here, this data sheet that you've got. Will you generate one of those for each of the projects that comes forward?
Every project already has one.
Already has one?
Yeah.
Can those be assembled into a way, I mean, are those going to be assembled so we can kind of look them over and?
Yeah. So the intent here is that when a project goes live, then that information is shared with the public. This is in the CMIP. This data sheet is there and available in a map, clickable link, and you can link out to this data sheet that tells you everything about the area around a project.
Well, I was just going to say, when it goes live is way after I'm interested in it anymore because I'm interested in it at the time that we're prioritizing for the purpose of budgeting. Great. I agree.
It will be made available. I mean, they're created now. We can make them available at any time.
Fantastic.
So that survey will go out. We'll be utilizing Survey 123 to conduct that survey. To get into the weeds a little bit on how this survey process will happen, a select few from that UG staff and BPU Scoring Committee will see the real details that have additional information about where the project is and have a map of that project and the footprint. But there will also be a blind participant group in that that will not see the spatial information about where it is, and they will score it purely on the data behind it.
Right. So to elaborate on that point, what, in order to assess effectiveness of this process, we wanted to try it two ways. One, just simply data that does not show location because we want to remove any, you know, desire, hey, I want to take care of my district, or why isn't this in my district? Or if I'm an employee of UG, well, this is in my neighborhood, so I'm going to score this higher. So we want to test to see if there's a difference in the results. So we're going to, they're going to test it, scoring it without location, showing the location, just the data that is presented by that specific project, but then also run through a process where people have the location to see what happens there. We're trying to make sure, make sure it's objective, really looking at the priorities, what we need to really work on first, and most importantly, and then test them against each other.
And just to add another layer to that, there will be, the selection of the people that will receive one portion and the other will be driven by if they have knowledge about future coming activities, economic activities. Those are the people that we, that really matters that they know when they score a project where it's at. And that'll be public safety, other infrastructure stakeholders, so BPU and Waterpole. These are the stakeholders that they need to know where a project is. That's part of their ability to score a project. So again, that'll, talking about that parallel track, this will be fed back into the same tool for prioritization to enhance that queue list of projects. Obviously, the highest-ranked projects are beyond the financial capacity of any given CMIP year. We will need to spread them out. So if four projects that cost 10, 15 million each get stacked up at the top of our queue, that's not a reality for us. So at some point after we have this queue, we'll work in concert with budget and finance to model out in scenario what a real budget looks like to take this queue and put it into reality. So just a quick recap of where we're at here for 2019. We're at the end of the year. I hope we're all ready to take a break. I am. And we've gathered our input criteria. We've produced a process for creating a data-driven ranking system. We have assembled a scoring committee, and they will be receiving surveys to help buttress our efforts and shore it up with human input. And we will be establishing some different CMIP budget scenarios from that information. And going into next year, we'll refine this process yet again. We'll come back and present this to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll present it to the Public Works Standing Committee, and we'll show them what it looks like. And then in the spring, early summer, we want this to be part of the 2021 budget process. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Yes, Commissioner Bynum.
So I think that last item helped answer one of my first questions because our current CMIP goes out four to five years. Right now, we're even up to 10, I think.
Five years.
Five. So the 2020 budget is set, and those projects are decided. But then, as we move into this budget cycle that we will start on and have started on now, for 2021, we might see a whole new CMIP. Chances are that some of the projects sitting in CMIP right now will go away.
Could happen. I mean, we're going to utilize this to come back, and it'll influence it. So there could be some projects that have been a plan for that year that we'll have to talk about whether or not that is going to push it out or not, and the impact on that. Some projects that are in '21 and '22 are heavily influenced by steps that are already taken in this year. As you recall, as we go through them, we start the engineering design work, and they're out. So they won't really, I guess, fall into it. So I don't know how many would change off in '21 just because what's already started there. Jeff, you can probably comment to that better, but it will start to influence how that schedule goes.
Yeah, I agree. I think 2023 is when you'll see wholesale changes.
Okay. And we'll be in a little transition period, probably.
Mm-hmm.
21, 22. And then how does this fold into our priority-based budgeting work?
It's complementary to PBB, I would say.
So that's where the scoring committee, it's kind of like with the data-driven part, we're going to establish those, what in the PBB process is the department-assigned evaluation. So if you've self-identified your relationship to the commission goal as XYZ, then it goes through that scoring committee process, and that gets either agreed to, ranked up or down. And that's basically what we're mirroring here with this process of running a survey.
Keeping in mind that PBB is operational budget and not capital.
Yeah. And that, so you come to priority-based budgeting, you're looking at the dollar, they're looking at, in the end, what's their dollar allocation that they have to work with. As Rob said, if we ranked up big 10 and 15 million-dollar projects, well, you're sucking out all the resources. Priority-based budgeting is intended that if you, as a commission, put the higher priority on capital, and that's where we're going to spend more money, then it'll, they'll have the projects lined up to take the money and where it would go. But it really doesn't move them up. If they're allocated 15 million a year, that's wherever the rank is, once you run out of money, that's a little shuffling there to use those dollars up maybe in a given year. If you have two left and the next project's eight, you might shuffle it around. But otherwise, they're complementary actions but not direct in the way you do the assessment.
I apologize, but I do have one more question. Is this inclusive of, it's not really building projects that are needed, is it?
Yes, actually, this does do building projects as well. I think what he showed here was on the street projects, but it'll be the same analysis, same type of scoring sheet.
Correct.
Done.
Yes.
With some tweaks to it, I think.
Have you done that? Is that park done also?
The idea is parks, buildings, and.
Okay.
And these have been computed for a handful of identified parks projects that are not in any CMIP currently.
This would not include stormwater or wastewater, as those are outlined in other plans. But we definitely want to leverage those projects, make sure we're, if we get into a neighborhood, we get in there one time if we can.
The ones that, as he noted, a couple of the parks projects, not all the parks projects that are in master plan have gone through this scenario yet. That'd be kind of another step, but at this point, we have no funding identified for them. So I mean, it's, what are you weighting them against at this point? So really, we don't need to, that hadn't been our focus to go through. We're going through where we have some money assigned and where we're starting to work these projects, or where we have the opportunity for things to be worked on.
Commissioner Philbrook?
So with all the priority-based stuff we're talking about, so when our survey comes back and we have another set of priorities from our, from our, the folks that live in Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, then we get to reemphasize then on any shifts of the commission priorities that then lead priority-based, and then the projects. Is that what I'm, is that what it comes down to?
Well, I think most of the information you're going to get back from the survey is going to tell you where streets projects or parks projects ranked in terms of funding that the citizens would like to see you spend money in certain directions. You know, it doesn't, as you know, it doesn't rank the projects or put out there and say we want a specific one.
No, it doesn't rank the project per se, but it definitely puts the emphasis to the commission.
Oh, yeah. If it comes back, and which it has for the last couple of surveys, I believe Streets is ranked as one of the highest priorities of our residents where they'd like to see you spend money, you know, then that comes back, that falls over to the priority-based budgeting side to say, okay, maybe we don't want to spend as much money here. We want to put more toward the streets projects. I don't know that there's anything in the survey that we've come back and heavily influenced this too much, you know.
I think the human component of the system that Robbie was talking about, then that survey would have some influence on how that works.
One of the ways the communities survey might influence this would be when, maybe every two years, we come back at this weighting criteria. If that influences the commission, then that might influence how you rank the criteria. And then that would change how the scores get computed in the future.
Yes, Commissioner Markley?
This all warms my little heart. So I think Brian and I are the only ones here today who would remember the time where we got basically nothing for CMIP, and there were no out years, and there was no spreadsheet that talked about unfunded projects. And we, as a commission, I mean, I'm sure staff was having these discussions in the background, but we felt very much like there was no intentional planning. And that was obviously long before Jeff was here, so anybody who's watching, it's not Jeff's fault. But we've come such a long way from that to having something that really lays out what each project looks like and all of these criteria. When we really, we were lucky if we saw a line item that we had any idea what it meant. So really appreciate it. It's great information. It's just really good information. I mean, this sheet is amazing. Years for adjacent property to fund the project? That's amazing that you could calculate that. So I'm fascinated. I am really looking forward to seeing it put into practice, and I really appreciate your work on it and the thoughtfulness that you put into how we approach our projects.
Thank you.
So along those lines, I just want to say, first of all, in the very beginning, you said, why do this? And again, to provide a deliberative, smart, and balanced approach to capital investment. I think that word "investment" is key. I think it's a, you know, it's easy. We're going to continue to have to do projects in response to something that happens. We have a bridge failure, a road failure, and then we can't, it's not going to go through the process. It's going to have to be fixed, right? But with the planning moving forward, just using the word "investment" and deliberative, again, signals that we are looking for, as some of the criteria, the return on investment. And we start saying, with limited resources, how do we move into the future to continue to create fiscal sustainability and opportunities for economic growth? And we look at the projects we do in the city to say, certain projects will certainly yield a better return on investment, which will pay off sooner, which might yield more economic growth than others. And it gets us to a different level, understanding with limited resources, how are we really strategic? So I like the change in language because it changes the way we think. And therefore, it should change the process, which then changes the results. So I think that's all. Good stuff. Commissioner McKeonan?
I completely agree, and I agree with Commissioner Markley and with you, Mayor, that this is pretty amazing stuff. And I have to confess, I was kind of looking through this, and I'm still trying to catch up with all the numbers and their significance on. Can you go back to your page 13, which has the graphic that goes along with these information sheets? That one. Because we've got one here that is just a little bit bigger that I'm taking a look at. And I love, up at the top, there's the graphic, there's all the information about the name and the budget and project description. That's great. Then you've got ROI, and you've got rank and score. Remind me again, I see that the score goes from 1 to 5.
The ranks are, represent where it falls in relation to all 50 projects that were part of this population study.
All 50?
Correct.
Okay. And so.
One being the best.
This particular, 86th Street Improvements is one of the ones that I'm looking at here. So, it ranks 15th of the 50 on ROI. And then, it ranks 10th out of the 50 in terms of its relative cost, but 23rd out of 50 in terms of community. And I assume that means benefit to?
Community locations.
Community, okay.
And those are kind of referenced a little bit more in depth in the lower right-hand part where there's a makeup of different community sites that are touched by the project or fall within the boundary of it.
Is there a legend somewhere that can decipher, I mean, decipher a little bit of this for us? Because I see A D T and D M V reg and I go, okay, I should know what that means, I'm sure.
I see Robbie taking notes. It's something we can.
Okay.
Well, and that's, I think, when you sent out the survey to the Public Works and Safety, there was like a little list that defined each of the.
Ah, right, true.
He needs that.
Please, that would be wonderful.
Certainly.
Commissioner McCarrenan, ultimately, what this is going towards is a C I P document, which is a document that today, we can do electronically with mapping, but we can also have it as maybe a PDF version. I don't, I mean, print version, you wouldn't want anyway. But that, in the day, they were print version and they were by fund and then had the projects in them and to also talk about what other projects tie to them. So, I think that's where we're headed as an organization is to provide that kind of document. And Jeff, I'd really, really appreciate if you follow up on that.
So, ultimately, these sheets just provide the background that led to wherever it finally appears on our ultimate ranking and recommendation for what gets funded.
I think of this kind of akin to a baseball card for a baseball player. This is like a stat sheet shorthand telling you a little bit about the project and different data sets that I have access to, to provide to you. So, like in the lower right-hand corner, that D M V reg, I have it abbreviated because I'm trying to fit it in that space. But down in the bottom left-hand part of it, we have a map of everywhere that a car, motor vehicle's registered in the county.
In this particular, you're, you count 1,300 vehicles within 1,500 feet of the center point of this project.
Correct.
Cool.
And, and if I have access, so with the average daily traffic is computed using information I have from K dot. That map is basically if, takes the maximum A D T within the distance of that project. So, if there's more than one data source from a K dot within the distance of that project, it's pulling the max one.
I love this approach to trying to be more thoughtful, more intentional and using data to try to get to what will not only, what we should prioritize, because it will give us the biggest return on investment, or it will represent the best investment we can make. If I can just get the legend for this project info sheet, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
I'll just look it over in my own time.
I told you, Rob, that Christmas was coming early for Commissioner McCarrenan. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. I think that anytime we have data that we can make, base our return on investment is important. I guess I would, using, using this sheet as an example, if I had to pick a project today, if these two were pitting against one another, I would look at the better scoring and what I could do to advocate for the project that has the best efficiency in numbers and return on investment. However, some of this data will reflect poorly in some areas of our community. And so, I guess I just want to go on record as stating that even though we have this data that shows the best return on investment, we need to be mindful. There are areas of our community that those investments will have to be made or should be made in all fairness. So, it may be that we'll want to set aside maybe one project a year that may not have the highest return on investment so it doesn't keep getting pushed down to the bottom of the pile. I mean, after all, we represent the entire county and, and if you're going to get the best revenue and generate the most revenue, those projects can go in and get done quite quickly, provided they're not the 15 and plus million dollar project. But I just, I can see where this data could push those projects that don't have that high of a score on down the list. So, I just thought I'd bring it to our attention.
Yeah. I think that's something we got to, I think, build into the data somehow, some kind of corrective to this or.
Yes. I think the scoring committee will be monitoring that. Robbie will be monitoring that. We'll be evaluating this every year, make sure that the weights are weighted appropriately just based on whether we're seeing patterns or trends. If we're seeing some projects fall down the list and keep falling down, then, you know, maybe we'll, like Doug Box said, you got that 15 million a year. So, if you got two projects, it costs you 12 and maybe, and you can't get another big project in there, then maybe one of those smaller projects that keeps getting pushed down floats to the top. So, you got all kinds of different things that can happen.
Commissioner Walters?
So, have the 2020 C M I P projects been evaluated using this criteria?
They have not, but they can be.
Well, that's great because I would really like to recommend that we do that. I think it would be very illuminating for me to see. We know the projects that we agreed to. It would be very good to know how they would have stacked up in this criteria, just as an educational exercise for us. I'm also really interested in the return on investment. It's such an important element. And it sounds like a science and sounds like it's a cut-and-dried process. But I have experience with this in which credentialed economists will get up and testify that a certain project will have tens of millions of dollars of positive return on investment. And then, an equally credentialed economist will get right up behind him and say it'll have a negative return on investment. So, it's all about how you calculate that or how we calculate that. And I think it's an art and a science. And that will, that may be, as I see it of these, the, the one criteria that is very important, but it's, it's not as objective as it might seem to be. So, how we do that, I think, really needs to be evaluated. So, if you could give us a thumbnail description at some point on how we look at return on investment, I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Walters, going back to your point that, you know, it'd be interesting to see how the current projects would be evaluated because there were reasons why those projects were chosen. There were valid reasons, right? And so, it might indicate to us, well, if we use the criteria, this might not have made the cut, but we made the choice because it needed to be done for these reasons. That's that corrective that might need to be built in.
Yeah. And I fully expect that there will be some glitches and some improvements over time as, as this thing gets implemented. I just thought it would be informative to see how it would have stacked up if we had used this criteria.
Commissioner Biden?
Staying on the slide where you are, can you walk us through that slide again? So, starting with costs, meaning that 14 out of 14 said it's number one? Help me again with what this slide's telling me.
So, the 14 is the percentage that you would assign. And if I gave you 100% and you split it up between all these categories.
Oh, sure. Okay.
You gave it.
But it's the highest, apparently.
Correct. And to describe cost, future O N M costs, so if we had, for example, X-linear feat of pavement striping on a section of road, but a project description calls for adding additional pavement striping to that, that's going to increase our O N M on that project space.
So, what I'm driving at is the point Commissioner Burrows was making and wondering if the weighting that we've created protects somewhat against the concern that he's brought forward. And then, secondly, I need you to tell me again, the weighting, where it's factored in on the data sheet.
It is intentionally left off the data sheet. Because this is, this was produced to be supplemental information during the survey process with the human input. It's also a public information piece. There could be a finalized version that shows that matrix composite score for the public consumption after a project's been pulled into the C M I P, if, if that's desired.
Commissioner Markley?
I think the master plan part is what's going to have the big impact on those communities that might not otherwise rank very high.
And that's.
Because they're either going to be in a master plan area or you're not.
Right.
And if you are, you're going to, you're going to have a weighted score based on that. So, areas like the northeast where we may not have as much of a population, where the income might be lower, some of those other strikes sort of might be against them, they have a master plan in place and they're going to get a score based on that. Where an area that has no master plan is going to get nothing.
So, that's part of what I was.
I think that's going to help make that adjustment.
Okay, okay.
In my mind, it is.
Yeah. So, in addition to solving for that problem of, let's say, real estate values or there's not a lot of sales tax in a particular area, that, that area could still be serviced by this model, either by population density or whether or not it falls into a projectary master plan. It's going to score well on different criteria. That's going to raise its composite score. And, you know, it's up to you to decide how to weight these. That's, and we're just trying to create some sort of transparent model that we can show how we prioritize a laundry list of projects.
I mean, it's possible. I think of, for instance, the Morris area, you know, and I could almost see perhaps another criteria would be length of time since last major capital improvement project. You know, something as simple as that and say, that way, it at least brings it to the forefront. And you say, okay, yeah, it's been 30, 40 years. And if, why is that important? Well, because neighborhoods begin to feel neglected. And so, that's an important goal of the community that we take care of the entire community. So, whatever that criteria might be, that could be a corrective. But again, this is something we work out.
Your town?
Thank you. I too like the efforts taken to have some type of a objective, tangible way to wait and decide what projects are going to be done. That's, my first question though about this is what we're looking at on that slide, the actual weights that are going to be given, is this for illustrative purposes only?
This is based on feedback we receive from Public Works Standing Commission and the Planning Commission. It can change in the future.
Based on what?
Input from the elected bodies. So, you and the commission.
Okay. So, okay, again, is this just for illustrative? Is this what we're, this is it? Okay. That, that's fine. That's fine.
This is a starting point, so, in the process. It'll be reiterated, some.
And it could change based on, say, the example that the mayor just gave. We want to, we want to wait the last time something was done in particular. Okay. So, this is what we're going with. In your earlier part of the presentation, you were talking about, I guess it was weighting, and it had to do with projects that were identified by location versus a more blind test you had. Okay. What happens to those various results? How are they blended? They're not blended? If you could go back to that for me, what becomes of those?
Yeah. So, we have the data-driven prioritization list and then we have the human input surveys that go through the same process. It's essentially going to be a check to see if the information we provided was perceived by human input to be important or relevant. And just check to see if the projects line up. If they do, then great. So, if it's one in the data-driven project list and it's number four out of 50 in the, in the human input list, I'd say we're pretty close. And then, we can merge those two and compute some sort of hybrid score between the data-driven and the survey.
At some point in the process, will both of those scores or both of the track results be presented to us or will we?
I think what we're doing, this, that's just the beta. They're going to just practice using both methods where you don't know what the location is. And another group would look at it with the location to see if there's any difference in the scoring. Again, what would seem important is not to allow kind of any personal bias in. So, again, if I'm on the scoring committee and I see a project to have the location and that's my neighborhood, am I somewhat more likely to weight that a little bit or score that a little bit higher? Possibly. We're just want to do a check to see if that comes into play at all. So, I don't think they've decided whether to use a blind with location or not location. We're just testing it at this point.
Well, the test is there, but it's also, I think, as we see it going forward, as it checks in balance. Because you go through it, you put all the data information into it, and then you come back and then you add that human element to look at it. And it goes to those factors, like you said. It could be an area that's been, it doesn't weight high on return on investment, but somebody on the engineering team knows something that didn't get picked up in the data about how much work we're doing out there or safety factors that have come into play that just are not coming back in. That could be from not getting enough data in that area. Or one of the issues we've talked about too is maybe some of the influences on commercial side of the sales tax equation. A lot of these weights here are coming into the property tax side of it. And some of them could weight heavier into other return on investment factors that are not getting brought into the equation. So, we could come through and say, well, it ranked on the data and here it is 15. But here are these other factors we looked at that didn't follow chart. And because of that, we've moved it up to number three. And, and we have to be able to defend that as staff, if we come in and say that and not say, because it was next to my house. You know, it was something that was influencing a particular area and we can all defend it. Either way, it's still defensible data, just some of it's brought forward by the human side versus just all the facts.
Okay. And that's what I was getting at. Where, where do you see the results of those tracks? So, that will be maintained and brought forward and explained when we're trying to decide which projects to rank and go forward on above some others.
I think it's likely, and, you know, we haven't done it yet, to come out. But as we go through and show it to you, we'll come through. And then, if you see some anomalies into it, those will be the ones where we explain, why did this move from 15 to three? You know, what, what influenced it to make it different from that perspective? And, and that's a good one from the policymaker perspective that, as you're seeing that, you may come up and say, well, I understand that, but I think you're missing a different element here.
Brief, brief note on improvements to the return on investment model. We're taking steps to formalize a process to, to include other revenue streams, including the sales tax and other instruments that are approved by this body to collect, collect revenues in a different manner.
And it's, and maybe, so we're, we're using the measure of tax revenues is a more accurate one, changes in property assessment? I don't know. But Commissioner Philbrook?
To shift the question a little bit. So, when we finally get to the point where we're doing this and we're utilizing it, how often will this data shift? Is it going to shift once a year? Or is it going to be a constant moving target with what's going on in real life? I'm just asking.
It'll be a combination of two things. So, one, the data that feeds, the data sheets will change. Let's say that there's a population change. The population information that's here is based on utility, on-off data and mailing, return, not returned. We have an address list that we maintain that is our population estimate. It's in-house, it's by address. That's going to change over time. So, we'll have refreshed data behind this. The other thing that will change is the list of projects. So, as projects get pulled out of that queue, that, that population of projects is going to change. So, it's going to change the rankings.
That's kind of what I was after, is to find out, so if we're halfway through the year and we had approved all these other projects, but then we have to yank one for some reason, then everything else will shift accordingly.
Yeah. So, and the other thing that could happen is if, if you pull a project out of the C M I P that's in it, it'll go into that queue again. So, I could see it working both ways, right?
Okay. So, something can move up and, and come into effect, maybe happen. Okay. Gotcha. Thanks.
We're grading on the curve. So, if you were getting an A before and then some really smart kid moves into your classroom and gets a higher grade, it could push yours down to a B. and gets a higher grade, it could push yours down to a B.
Oh, the memories.
That's a personal pain story there. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. I just have one question on the annual UG tax rule that you gave as an example. You gave three, the 250, 1,000, 1,500 feet. The 852, I'm looking at the 86th Street example that you gave, it's a total of 852. Is that the valuation, or is that the actual tax revenue?
That is the, that's the actual tax rule that only goes to the UGs. So the school districts and other mills are scraped out of there. That's just UG tax rule.
Revenues.
That was, are the revenues generated.
Correct.
So the, I see you have a 1.6 million on the scale. Where does that number come from?
Yeah, where?
I'm still looking at the same example.
So that, is that the 1,500 foot buffer on that one?
Because I've looked at here, 2.4 million here on the other side.
1.6, okay.
Yeah, 1.6. I'm looking at the scale on the left side, because I noticed you have 2.4 on the other side and 1.6. What are those numbers?
The numbers on the far left are just giving you a point of reference.
That's it?
Well, yeah, so that, I, I labeled the top, so above the bar, you can see the real number at that distance. On the left is just a description of the Y-axis.
Okay, so the 852 is the aggregate of the first two columns, or is that in addition to?
It's its own buffer in its own data set. So I selected all the parcels that fell within 1,500 feet of a project, and I summed the tax rule.
Okay, so we have an aggregate number of almost 14, 1.4 million?
No, it's, it, each of those are separate, so like, it's a cookie cutter, right? So you get the first distance, that's its own thing, the second distance is its own thing, they're not additive.
These two are part of 1,500, because 250, then you get, then you would take everything within 1,000, so 402, but then you've added that additional 500 square feet outside of this project has the same amount of value as the first 1,000 does. That's how you jumped up all the way to 852,000 in this regard.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so for a point of reference on that, years to fund adjacent, obviously not 100% of the UG tax rule goes to pay for Public Works projects.
Sure.
So this is a little, little, it's a little too hard to peel that onion, but for a point of reference, we have, we're working on it, but for simplicity's sake, to show the, the ability for a project to get funded by the adjacent tax rule, we're taking the cost of the project and dividing it by the tax rule. That's where that year comes from, currently.
You're using last year's...
2019 tax assessment.
Tax assessments.
Well, yeah, the UG portion of the tax rule, it's real money, like, this is the real tax rule on a per parcel basis.
That's interesting.
Okay, this is a great start. Any more questions from the commission? Anything else you want to? Our next step will be, what is the next step?
Yeah, in the spring, we'll be running around again and going to the different...
Running around again?
Well, you did mention that you could evaluate the 2020 CMIP. When could we expect to see something on that?
Um...
You don't have to do it by Christmas or anything, but...
You tell us when.
Yeah, way to play Grinch there, Commissioner Walters, yeah.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Why don't we work on that, and then put something back to tell the commission that we can evaluate it by then? I think that would be good to, whether that's something we just want to show the commission, or we want to come back to a special session to do it, or it might take, we have a lot of special sessions lined up.
I think it would be very interesting.
Yeah, I think it would, too. I think it helps us look at factors here we may have missed, or need to reconsider going into it.
Which would you prefer I prioritize, the 21 and out, or this 2020 review?
I think we should create...
Let's do the 2021. Yeah.
Do we have to do all of 2020? Can we pick out a handful of projects in 2020 that may give us, the projects that may have been discussed?
Well, I think what Commissioner Walters is looking for is, because since we're going to be ranking them against each other, evaluating them against each other, you'd want to evaluate them against each other, so throw them back in the mix and see where they would come out.
I treat them as unfunded projects.
Yeah, really, when you do your 21 stuff, Rob, I mean, when you go through all that, you're going to have all those 50 there.
Yeah.
And then you're just going to do the, you know, how many, we don't have that many we're funding this year.
True.
You know, to, to figure, adding another half dozen into the mix.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you have to keep it at 50 and throw the others out, or...
No, I just...
Now it's 56 projects we're weighting against, and show how it ranked out against those that are...
I like him. I like your attitude.
Come to it.
So you will present it in a binder, basically, the, the 50 projects? The cheat sheet like we saw here would be...
And, and I would say it's likely we may end up bringing this to Standing Committee, and then the rest of you will have it. So it may be, I'm just trying to think of, we probably want to get this done by February. We've got a lot of special sessions as we come into the next year, so I want to do this, and we want to be in place for our budget, but your committee would have it, and then the others could all see the information, and of course, you're always all welcome to attend. We can sure make it a point to let everybody know when we're doing it.
Well, I did want to add one point. So last year, during the, the CMIP budget process, the book that you got included an enhanced CMIP section, and in this past year, if you open it up, you can see it, it's got a page for every project, and a lot more detail, pictures, so forth. And we did that through that Questica software. The plan is in the introductory section and a lot more discussion. The plan with Public Works is to separate that out into a separate document, so that you have a budget document and then, for operating, and in a CMIP. And in that separate document, as Melissa mentioned, we hope to add these sheets into it. So there'll be a, a project description sheet as well as this sheet, so...
6:30.
Yes, Commissioner Townsend?
One other question. It seems as though I recall the last couple of budget sessions, we also saw a listing of CMIP unfunded. Is that going to be in the mix and evaluated for all of these projects? And, and I'd like to know if that's going to, and, and like to see it, because then it tends to take away this, well, that wasn't evaluated. So is that going to be in the mix, or is it in the mix?
Yes, it's our intention that all the projects we've identified to put into the mix, you're throwing 50, that number moves, I guess, year to year to year. I mean, if it has 50, and we fund five, and then we identify 10 more to come into it, so now we're ranking on a scale of 1 to 55. Is that how that'll work, right, Rob?
Yeah, so is, the, the way I've set up this data model, it's just, doesn't matter what the population is, we could have a million projects, it'd run the same way.
So it's not really, I mean, everything that's not in the five-year CMIP will be in the rest of the book.
Right.
It'll be one of the other 50-some projects that are not in the book, you know, or they're, they're all in the book, because they're all ranked against it, they just fall outside of what we can put in a feasible five-year plan to think we can fund.
The idea with your CIP book, CMIP book, is that it actually shows you on the ones that are funded, the funding streams, how they're set up, revenue and expenditure, and the years in which they're going to occur, because even though we're ranking these, we're still going to show you what we think is going to occur in the out years, based on that ranking, right? So you're going to see what's going to happen in the next year, but you're going to see based on the ranking of what's in the mix today, what we see happening in those out years based on that. Because again, his staff has got to be queuing projects up into the future. So again, that kind of, that transition window of, you know, a couple of years makes a lot of sense, given that we're already stacking things for 2021 when it comes to engineering and design. So this, I think, will give you a much better look out into the future, and then when we do add in a project and it ranks differently, you'll see sort of that trickle-down effect throughout the book. Am I missing anything, Kathleen or Jeff?
No, great job.
I've done a few of these before.
Commissioner McKeonan?
I fall behind, but eventually I catch back up. So you were talking about, I don't know if you can see it from where you are, this page, the summary sheets that were in the master budget document. Now, did you say, oops, and it turned black as soon as I turned it around, that one? You said that this would continue to be in the master budget document, these summary sheets would continue to be?
Yeah, in fact, well, what I, what we want to do is separate out the operating budget from the capital, so...
Okay.
But yes, it'll be in a capital document.
Yes.
Along with this.
And this, okay. See, I told you I fall behind, but I eventually catch back up.
Yeah, the idea is that, that the traditional approach is that you show capital in one document, and the operating in another. So, and then you ultimately, well, the other thing that Kathleen's been working on is a revenue forecast book, which is another one. They all play with each other, but there are separate ways of looking at them, because they're trying to tell different stories and convey information in different ways.
Perfect, thank you.
And in addition to that, there'll be a, a map version of all this put together for public information.
Can you mind if I...
Yeah, so there's also the CMIP map, that's at http://www.ycokck.org, for, I'm just messing with you. There's a CMIP map out there that you can get to.
How do we?
Maps.ycokck.org, forward slash, cmip.html. And that'll take you to that map. But you can also get to it if you go to the UG website and you type in projects into the search box, it'll take you to the CMIP project.
Are you telling me, Brian, that you have not played with this map?
I have not.
Oh, goodness.
No, I just, actually, I think I have.
You did early on, yeah.
I think Robbie, I think Robbie sent me the link to this a year ago, maybe? So I actually do think I have.
And that's, that's just a compliment to the...
Hey.
I know, I will, I'll be, I'll be shocked.
That's just a compliment to the finance document that you, you get.
Great.
Thank you for the presentation. We are adjourned, we are 6:30, Police Department graduation, and the council chambers, commission chambers. Thank you.